I will, uh, it is December 1st, I will call to order a regular meeting in the millions for the selection. It is Monday, July 17th, 2023. Um, if you would join me, you'll have to leave immediately. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under the invisible liberty and justice. I'm going to be shut up. I am on vacation. This is what we do. The, uh, next meeting is approval of minutes. In your, kind of, you have a regular meeting from, uh, last meeting to 20th. So you just now need, uh, July 3rd. Okay, with a, uh, motion and a second, any discussion?
None. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion, excuse me, motion carries. Alright, so, uh, present, start in the room, um, until Karen gets back and sits down. Um, if you are present to speak, I ask you identify yourself for the record and limit your comments to two minutes. Is there anyone in the room present to speak?
No. Long shot.
Does that include me?
Uh, we're gonna start in the room here.
Okay, sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing it on this end.
Yeah. Hi, John Teres was 15, was the road. I have three questions. You and I wondered if the town had applied for the, um, HVAC grants for elementary schools or schools that were given out by the state in a rather difficult way, I think. Uh, we didn't know, have, have we applied for that grant?
I'm sorry?
Have we applied for that grant?
I will, so normally we don't get into discussions against your questions, but that's actually a question for the Board of Education. Because that's who would apply for that.
Well, because they're the ones who would like that.
Correct, yes.
Okay, because the second question was, are we going to get in line for it? I hope we get it. I, I think that's.
I, I encourage you to, uh, follow through at the Board of Education, but I believe they are, um, having discussion.
Yeah, I didn't know who took care of the grants and.
It's, if it's for the school support.
Okay, good, thanks.
You're welcome.
My third question is concerning, um, the ability to have wine and beer on town property. Is that by tradition or by, um, statute or what? Does anybody know?
We can get back, we can get back to you with that.
Yeah, I, I don't know what we would like to be able to, with permit, let some groups, you know, um, be able to have it occasionally. Okay, thank you.
Can you admit those couple folks into the meeting? Alright, if you're online and would like to speak, it is us, you raise your hand. Um, I don't know who, but I did hear you speaking before. If you want to say something to speak.
Hi, it's Colleen Quinn. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I was just here to speak on the changing of the hours again. So do you want me to wait till the end? Is that what that is?
You're, uh, it's up to you. You certainly, uh, you have the floor now.
Okay, um, also I wanted to say was I heard a couple people have some concerns about days of meetings and stuff like that. And I know it's hard to change things, but my, I brought my kids up in this town and it's just such a, it's a village. It's not just a town, it's a village. And I will say that at this point in time, like, people did say that schedules are different. So I think that it's a great change because now people will be able to go to the town hall if you change the hours and they won't have to take the whole day off of work. Because the times that it's open, like nine to two, that's like kind of in the middle of the day. So it kind of messes with you, you have to take the whole day off where with the hours they have shown that they want to do, people could either go in an hour late or they could leave work an hour early and they're not missing a whole day's pay. It kind of just goes with the way that things are today. So I just wanted to speak on that and I, like I said, I heard a couple of people have concerns. Can't remember one of them. One was the, like, town meeting, when are we gonna have it? I don't really think, I think that's something that, you know, would be able to be feasible for you guys to find a way to do a meeting. And then I also feel that the person had a concern because their time of being at the place and researching stuff and things. Um, I think that there'll be plenty of time for it to be open and even more time for that person. Um, unfortunately, I can't remember the other thing, so, um, but I just wanted to speak positively about it and tell you the reasons why. Um, change is hard, but if we try it, you get to see if it works. I also feel that you can't judge it in three months or six months. It has to go a little longer than that because we've been in this town for so long, we're all used to this, that like, oh, the hours are like that. It'll take some time, but I think it'll pick up and a lot more people will be happy with that in the town because it has been agreements for a lot of workers. So I'm all for the change and a four-day work week with all those hours, that's great. Um, that's it.
Thank you. Hello.
Nick Delo, 49 Myrtle. Um, so I just want to touch upon a few things here. Uh, if town employees, um, of any position are given bonuses and they quit or step aside, do they have to pay back those bonuses at a prorated rate? Um, I know we probably not gonna answer yet, but maybe at some point here. Um, is also the town still in violation of the FOIA, um, exemptions? That's been mentioned in the past. I know the town was out of, um, it was in violation and, uh, was curious if you guys have updated that. Is the town also working to improve, uh, town, town meeting, um, the ability to vote at town meetings? And lastly, um, I was unaware that at the town dump, people, the citizens are, are recorded, uh, video and by audio. Um, and there's no signs anywhere stating that, that I'm aware of, at least that are noticeable. So I, I have concern of that and, uh, I'm curious if we're following guidelines and such when it comes to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Now there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Can you, um, if you're telling. Alright, moving along to correspondence. Um, you have a list of correspondence in your packets. Um, and keep in mind, once again, this is male correspondence that comes in, um, especially since COVID. Um, and from state, um, already we get a lot more email than we ever did before, so. That's why you might see that less smaller than, um, it happens in past. Alright, moving on to my update. Um, I'll start with, uh, I have nothing new to report on this. Steve Grant, this is the old town hall septic. Um, we are still waiting, um, to, uh, get the documents to the town engineer so that we can go out, um, to bid. And the Laxit project, which is, um, the sidewalk project from Hall School to the mills. Um, once again, we are working with, uh, DOT, um, and updating process design estimates. We'll work on a DOT permit, um, begin working on outreach with property owners and then go out to bid on that project. It's safe to say none of these are going to happen in this construction. Um, let's see, SBC, Mike, do you have, um, update? Must have been, you all had a meeting since our last meeting?
Based on the request from the Board of Education, the School Building Committee is in the process of gathering up a framework and pulling together the various members' ideas for a final report as well as reviewing the previous final report. Um, and we also have an inbound final report from the consul. And, um, so we'll be working to pull that into one sort of cohesive product soon.
Great, thank you. Um, staff updates. Um, as the selectmen are aware, we shared with you as soon as we were made aware, our Public Works Director Troy Spazato is, um, leaving his position as of Friday, July 28th. Um, I want to thank Troy for his years of service to Wellington. Unfortunately, this would have been Troy's last meeting with us, um, and he's taken ill today, so he can't, um, be with us. So I will be reading his report, um, but certainly you're welcome to reach out to him, um, individually after this. I, well, and I, I know he left us and came back to the comments made earlier in present to speak. Um, any, uh, extra contractual will be, um, paid out in the manner to which it was agreed upon. So, um, if there were something to be done differently, it would be based on any agreement that was made. Um, and we paid out a bonus that was in public here at this board without any other stipulations. Um, and I do, I truly believe our Public Works Department is better for the years that Troy served us. He is moving on to private, um, service, no longer, um, in the public sphere. So, um, certainly his future plans are his to share, but we wish him well in the future. We have posted the position, um, and we posted, um, in the newspaper. We posted, um, with CCM, um, and in TV. And, uh, so, and I look forward to, um, quality candidates to move us forward. Um, and at our next meeting, I'd like to talk about, so it gives a thought to what that hiring committee looks like. This is an incredibly important, um, position and certainly, um, this board would be, um, encouraged to participate, but who else would like? I have some thoughts. I like your input together for the meeting. Alright. Um, as far as other staff updates, we have hired a new, um, administrative assistant that was in the works prior to Troy giving his notice for continuity, um, work in that department. We went, we'll forward with the hires, so Patricia Martin began with us last Monday. And, uh, we look forward, uh, to her service to the town. The Human Services, um, Director position has not yet been built. Um, I anticipate that happening very soon and we too will talk about with the hiring committee for that very important, um, department position looks like. In the meantime, I really can't say enough about the work that, um, Karen in my office and Colleen, uh, Pep and Nan King, um, in the Human Services Department have done to keep things, um, afloat. This is, um, a, a team effort, uh, between myself and these three incredibly valuable individuals, making sure that our residents are continuing service, um, in the absence of a director. So thank you. Thank you to Karen, Colleen, and, um, Nan. Right, that's all I have for staff. Any questions from the studio? Okay. Um, I, yes.
Hiring positions. You just, we have an opening position right now.
Human Services.
And Human Services.
To just fill the, oh, I'm sorry, the Assistant Land Use Agent. Um, that's open, um, to fill. Mike has, um, I know Mike DeMato has, uh, a couple of resumes and interviewing, but we kept the applications open, so, um, kind of on a rolling basis until we have that role built. A lot of the work that comes out of that office is online, so we're able to continue services. Um, P D DePoca is, uh, working tirelessly there and Mike, as you know, although only here one day a week physically, um, continues to service that department as we did.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we, you're all aware that there were issues with the, uh, Wellington Fire Department, uh, number one. Their main building on Route 32, closest to Route 84, where they had mold in the building. They received funds from Board of Finance to mitigate the issue. So that's Chief Moore, if he could update us on the status.
Thank you. Um, so the mold work has been completed. Uh, once they, the hope was that, once they started getting the walls, they'd be able to find where the mold would stop and, you know, leave some of the walls. That did not happen. Uh, they ended up digging every piece of sheetrock out of our house. Uh, so all of the sheetrock is out, um, all of the insulation on the back wall, um, floor to ceiling came out. That was, um, the insulation itself on the backside for, uh, of the tins really bad, um, which they kind of expected, knowing that it went on the other side of it. Uh, we have noticed a couple of places that are during the heavy rain, um, on the backside of the wall that leak a little bit, um, but it's not the caliber of where the water's coming in. Um, so the sea channel on the bottom of, uh, ground is, is full of water. Um, so leaks that we have found are not, are not waters filling that. Um, we did reach out to the town engineer, he did come down, um, just to try to give us some recommendations as well. Um, moving forward, that was all, we're waiting on his recommendations. Um, and then, kind of, come up with a plan. Um, I think once we have somebody back in, um, of what we need to do in the back, um, with some harder numbers, the hope would be that the Board of Finance, that the selectmen, um, would be willing to be with us at the building so that everybody can actually see what's going on. Um, and have a conversation of what, what should we do?
Yeah, I, I think that's really a great plan because, you know, we've now got a shell of a building. A shell of a building that, um, houses incredibly important work. We have 24-hour coverage to man our, uh, ambulance and that's being done out of a station, um, with less than adequate working conditions and only meant to be temporary. On top of that, these folks are utilizing space here. We're welcome, they're, they're, they're welcome here. I mean, we're happy to have them, but these are only temporary solutions. And at that, we have a, a project at CIP for, uh, an addition to that firehouse. And certainly before we move forward with that, we have to take a look at what it will cost just to get us back to where we were um, before we identify the mold situation and look at if adding on to that building is still the most cost-effective, um, option.
And I think that's why we want to have the conversation with both boards and both boards together um, so that we can collectively work at it rather than us trying to, we'd rather it be one larger conversation than us just trying to figure it out on our own.
Welcome back, Mike or Jen?
No, I very much agree with that. It, it is very much, even though this is sort of emergent, it's very much part of this larger conversation about what do we do with emergency services? What's the efficient solution? How do we best spend the taxpayer money? And, and for example, this idea of putting an addition on a building that needs repairs needs to be part of the conversation, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something really good and important and expensive, we have to make sure we're attaching it to something that's worthy of being attached to. Um, you know, so maybe it takes a reworking of the plan or maybe it takes some new perspective on how we do this.
And one more temporary, um, change is that that building is our emergency operations center. So yesterday, we were in the, um, potential, um, we had the potential to open our emergency operations center had the, um, catastrophic rain that was forecasted actually happened in Wellington and we didn't have to. So we're having to make additional choices as to where we need, that, that still meets all of the needs and, and it's more than just a generator, it's being able to access the information for fire service. So there's a lot of things that happen in that building and, um, I, I look forward to working with, with you, Chief, and Chairman Summers of the Board of Finance to have a joint meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Um. I mean, just lastly, I had one more thing, uh, I'd like to come back to it. Okay, we're gonna move on to Public Works again. Um, I apologize, Troy had every, uh, expectation of being here. Um, and so in his absence, I will read his reports. Public Works has been continuing roadside mowing, um, picking up trash at the park, organizing and cleaning up, uh, the shop and a lot of that happens on those really rainy days as well as cleaning catch basin tops off around town. They've installed new street signs around town. Um, they worked with the Town of Putnam. Um, they came in and jetted a couple of pipes on Holster Road in anticipation of the work that's being done there. They prepped, um, the area for the new generator to be installed at the Public Works garage. That was a Harper project. They put crushed stone at Vermont Park for the Conservation Commission. Um, they worked at the dog pound, removing a wall, um, and cleaning up, uh, throwing away items that, that were no longer of use. Um, they chip rushed from storm damage. They edged Holster Road. The edging of Holster Road, um, I'll just say that was, uh, if it come to our attention, we had gotten a phone call, um, from actually a Stafford resident uh, with some concerns about trucks parking in, um, not a parking lot, opposite the Love's Truck Stop. And the number of trucks that have, have been seen there. And so this had been going on for a couple of days. It came to my attention when that, um, resident contacted my office. So I spoke with Troy. We worked with, uh, Mike DeMato. I went out there and looked at it myself. There were a handful of trucks there. At any one point, there were, um, 16 trucks identified by this, um, individual and it's not a parking lot. It is private property, is not town-owned property, but we certainly, as part of the widening of the road, we, um, have a right of way there that's greater than before. We had some, um, concrete barriers, if you will, to protect the farmer's, um, land with a small opening so that he could still get his tractor in. The trucks were using that and just going over the curb. So if, this is a temporary solution. It certainly is not pretty, it is not meant to, but it's meant to keep the trucks from parking there. We certainly have concerns about things seeping into the soils. It seemed to have prevented it. Um, the Stafford resident was very concerned about then having trucks lined up on Holster Road. I said, well, the private property isn't ours and, you know, we have limited, um, ability to, for use. I can tell you for sure that the road is ours and it will not become a parking lot. Um, and that hasn't happened, so we worked on mitigating that and, uh, Public Works jumped, um, right into it and got out there and, and made that inaccessible. Um, and we're working with Loves, um, in as much as we can to get them to, uh, assist them in cleanup because we know this was, um, usage from their, their business.
How were they?
So far, they have been good. Um, it's difficult because we're working with corporate, we're not necessarily working with the folks that are here, um, in Wellington, but so far they've been responsive. We've been working, again, with Mike DeMato and then our attorneys to, to what we can do to make sure that there are things we can do. But they've been responsive and, and so we're working on, um, a permanent mitigation of, um, access to that particular piece of property. They, part of them turning over the road to us was that had to then be exceeded. All of that was lost as trucks were parking there, it became a muddy lot. So we're working to see if we can't get them to, um, clean up and put it back the way it was supposed to. So that's, that's what the edging of Holster Road was. They also installed new catch basin tops on Holster Road. Uh, Holster Road is set to be reclaimed, reeded and paved this week. Weather permitting, there was a notice out that the road will be closed, um, to through traffic, um, from, um, Pass Loves to the Stafford line. So you will be able to access Loves and those, um, homes will be able to access. There may be a wait. Um, but if you're trying to go through from Wellington to Stafford, you will be, um, turned around. So again, weather permitting, uh, whether nature seems to think that this is her watering hole these days, so we'll see how it goes. Um, and then crack ceiling will begin on Wednesday on the following roads and we will put out public notice of this. Miller Farms, Leslie Road, Flint Eldridge Road, Old Farms Road, and Glass Factory Road.
Subject to the weather again, right?
Oh, yes. It's all subject to the weather. Alright, any questions, Public Works related? Okay. Um, the other update I wanted to give you, I apologize, I'm gonna go back to my report. Um, we have been working in response to some concerns at the roadway in, here in Wellington. So I just want to give you both a, a, a quick update that, um, we're working with stakeholders in Fire Marshall, um, our fire departments. Um, I have been, uh, communication with state police, um, Health Department, our land use office, um, and making sure that, um, any concerns we have there, uh, can be properly mitigated. So I just want folks to know that those are, while we may not be able to give you specifics, we are working, um, on issues, um, that are within our control. New business. Item A is award vehicle leasing. So, excuse me, so as part of the CIP plan, we should have in your packets, uh, and information. We have two vehicles. The third was supposed to be the Public Works. We, as you know, we sit kind of in limbo with that, to my frustration. Uh, but we had agreed to, uh, lease two vehicles. One was the 2024 Freightliner, um, single axle plow truck for Public Works and the 2023 Chevy Tahoe, um, for Wellington Fire Depart, I'm sorry, Wellington Hill Fire Department and the accessories that go along with that. So we put out a bid, um, for leasing. You have in your packet the results. We received three bids. We are looking for a seven-year lease to finance $194,500. We received three bids, one from Flagstar Public Funding Corp. at a rate of 4.71% and zero dollars in fees. Um, municipal leasing consultants, 4.99% uh, rate and zero dollars in fees. And the third was from American Capital Financial Services, Inc. at a rate of 5.259% and $495 in fees. Um, this information was compiled by our Business Manager, Donna Latinsix. And Donna's recommendation is that we, um, move forward with Flagstar Public Funding. Uh, therefore, I will, to start the conversation, move to award the seven-year lease in the amount of $194,500 for the 2024 Freightliner and the 2023 Chevy Tahoe to Flagstar Public Funding Corp. for 4.71%. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, invite Jen. Discussion. So this item does need to go to public hearing. Um, there's no vote, but it must go to a public hearing. We also have to have a resolution that allows us to sign and enter into this agreement. Typically, that's done at the same time. In this case, this bid closed at 12 o'clock today. Um, and again, uh, I take some vacation, so I wasn't here to speak with Donna today. Typically, they'll send us the resolution. The next item would be me reading this very lengthy, very legal resolution before we move into the public hearing portion. Um, Flagstar would like us to, um, if we are moving forward with them, sign their proposal in term sheets and accepting that by the town and then they will provide us with a resolution that would be at our next meeting. So when we get to the town meeting called for the public hearing, I've done that after our next meeting. Kind of moved the date from what we anticipated the town meeting being so that we can have all of those things done as we go into public hearing with, um, townspeople.
Okay, question.
Yes.
So this, having wrangled with these processes many times over the last almost six years between Board of Finance and Board of Selectment, but I've been on, why are we going back to public hearing?
We have to, it, I believe it's statute, we have to have a public hearing before we can move forward with the lease. It doesn't require a vote, but it does require a public hearing to share any information with public people.
So we don't do that a lot of times, so.
No.
So why are we doing it now?
I believe, so.
We don't usually do it.
It, it's for, on the, on any lease we do. So what I don't know is, I, I can't say, if it's statute and, and I believe it's a statute that says we, we must.
We've done a lot of leases without doing this.
Oh, I, I think all the leases that we've done, the last time we did a lease, we had a lease on the last three vehicles. We do a public hearing, no vote. It, it doesn't usually get much attention at the town meeting if that's.
Um, yeah.
It's basically telling you, this is what, here, here are the items, we're leasing. Here are the terms with which we're going to agree to the lease.
We leased Public Works equipment without a public hearing.
I don't think so.
I've done, we've done it on mowers and tractors and stuff like that.
Okay, all of the.
Listen, if, if it's the right thing to do, it's better to do it the right way.
I can tell you in my time we had, we've done it on, uh, two or three. Um, and even before that, um, you know, we don't like to recreate the wheel here for those regular, and so we go back, um, to previous. But for a lease, this is the process of that. It is a.
An informational public hearing.
Correct. Yeah, and we try, and it's my goal, and it was my goal to have this with other things we needed to vote on. We're gonna spend money on a, on a town meeting. We want there to be multiple items. The tiny didn't work out, but it's important that we move forward with this item and we not put it on hold for others because especially the, um, the Freightliner is set now until November. It's gotten pushed back, but the Chevy Tahoe will be ready. What we don't want to do is once again miss out on being able to, um, secure a vehicle.
Yes, I agree a hundred percent.
And I stand corrected that the Public Works vehicle that has still not been replaced, we actually already agreed to a reason on that. We've been paying on that reason we had no vehicle.
Right.
So that was not to be on here. Alright, any other questions on the motion? Which was to award the seven-year lease for the Freightliner and Tahoe to Flagstar. Seeing no other discussion, I will call for a roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. Alright, the next. All right, the next item. On the folder. The next item, we have several appointments. I will start with the Wellington Housing Authority and reapointment of Claudia Degada. And you folks have a list of suggested motions. Certainly, they, you know, they're not required to make, but if you'd like to jump in. I will move to reappoint Claudia Degada as a member of the Wellington Housing Authority effective August 2nd, 2023, expiring August 1st, 2028. Is there a second?
Second.
Second on my, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The big body for her continued service in this role. Sorry, let me.
Can you give me a communication from the Housing Authority? Is there a recommendation?
Yes. Did you receive, so we did receive communication. Did the Selectmen receive those?
We didn't.
Okay. We'll make sure they get into your packets. We'll make sure you get a copy of this. We did receive communication from Don Burke, who happens to be sitting here. Who is that Chair of the Housing Authority.
I should have asked that before we voted. But it just popped into my head afterwards. Okay.
Um, yes, I'll start with saying that none of these come without someone coming forward where the recommendation came from the Chair or individuals on their own. Doesn't mean we have to appoint them. Just, it is our it is our role to do so. Item B is Housing Authority, and I apologize, it is not a reapointment. This would be a new appointment. This would be a new member. So that is, was an error in the agenda, but an appointment nonetheless. So I'll make a motion to appoint Arthur Blasky to the Wellington Housing Authority to fill a vacancy effective July 18th, 2023, expiring August 1st, 2025.
Second.
Second of my Jim. Any discussion? You, again, excuse me. Yes.
So you're gonna be filling Jack Maske's position versus
I can't.
Laurel Mills?
I don't know which one it is. I can tell you, we work with the town clerk to provide us with the term that is available for the appointments we have. So I don't, I don't, I can't tell you who it was attached to, but I can tell you that this is what we are, this is the timeframe by which we would be appointing Mr. Blasky.
Okay. And one other correction was in my letter of recommendation. I said he's been living in Butte Hill six months and he corrected me this evening that it's been, as of August 1st, it's been a year.
Time flies. Thank you for that.
And I was hoping to fill a longer position, but I think we can work with what you got.
Okay. This one goes through 2025, so it's still, it's to your position.
I was hoping for five years from today, so.
All right. Right. Any discussion on Mr. Blasky appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. I'm gonna make the motion and then I'll add some comments. I'll move to reappoint Patrick Lord on the Inland Wetlands Water Force Commission effective August 16th, 2023, expiring August 15th, 2026. There a second?
Second.
Second on my mic. I want to thank Patrick once again for his continued service. This is a commission that is losing effort. It is, it is small. Their chair has just stepped down as of August 1st. So there's a question as to whether or not they can continue to meet with the numbers they have. So if anyone listening is interested in joining the Inland Wetlands Water Force, I encourage you to reach out to the Selectmen's Office, the Town Clerk's Office. Certainly speak with Mr. D'Amato in Land Use. I mean, he can put you in touch with any member of that department if you're not sure of qualifications. Mike is working on what some other options would be. We don't have enough members. And what that would look like joint with planning and zoning and some other avenues. But this is a vital, vital commission. And we are in desperate need of members. So thank you to Patrick for his willingness to continue to serve.
We have a letter from somebody or
Yeah.
Recommendation.
I think this came from Peggy. So his term will be up in August. And so typically what we, what they would do is reach out to those members and ask them if they would like to be reappointed. So this isn't, we're not filling one in the middle. This is in continuity of his service, which is why you see it not effective until August 16th. Being no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. See, we can't agree. All right. The, the next item, this came from an individual requesting appointment to the CIP Committee. Jim Marshall has sent a letter. Do you have that one?
I think I saw that.
Okay. To the CIP Committee. We sent a few notes to all the Selectmen.
Yeah, I think he just sent that to the mail portal.
Yeah. Yep. Which is on Karen. Well, we all, we all picked up the same thing, so. Asking to be appointed to a vacancy from now until December. It's when a term would end. I don't know how many of these would have between now and then.
So the clerk helped us with that ring.
Absolutely. All of these go through the town clerk to make sure that there are openings and then we have the proper term. First, that there's a vacancy. Second, that the person is potentially qualified, that there aren't any other. For instance, I can't sit on a board of commission. So making sure it's not me who's asking to be unsupervised and qualified or the Board of Finance Chair asking to be our, you know, our member on Board of Education. So everything goes through there for checks and balances.
All right. So are we at the point where I can make the motion?
Sure.
Okay. I move to appoint Jim Marshall to the CIP Committee effective 7/17/23, expiring 12/1/2023.
A second for discussion purposes. Listen, I'm always open to folks wanting to sit on boards of commissions. We don't have enough people willing to come forward. This is one of those committees that I think we need a broader voice. And adding another member of the Board of Finance gives me pause. And we've done that in the past. It's been very heavy Board of Finance. So it's the same group of folks making multiple level decisions. And this would add, you know, yet again, another member of the Board of Finance to CIP. And I would like to see, I'd like to see a more broad scope of people. With that said, if no one's willing to come forward, you can't appoint them. This is only till December. Typically, this board begins meeting in January. So if Mr. Marshall were interested in continuing, you would have to apply, reapply to, to be reappointed. In the meantime, I would encourage anyone listening to, to consider some of these boards so that we have a variety of voices. So when it gets to the Board of Finance, there are another level of voice and not just rubber stamping their own word, if you will. At one point, I want to say that committee was four members or five members of the Board of Finance because no one else was willing to serve and they were. So that's my two cents.
That was five cents.
Okay.
So it's funny that you mention that. So I had the same thought because I was one of the people who was not full of Board of Finance in CIP. But also I've had the chance to experience Jim's input, like on the SBC and all that. And, and obviously he provides a lot of valuable input and is willing to serve. Both of those are pretty important things in getting people on these committees. So I guess my feeling is we have, the, the three we did already, did we have some sort of endorsement from the individual groups? We did with housing. Did anyone from Inland Wetlands like communicate in support of Patrick Lord's? Or was that his own letter to us?
So this is, oh, so the Peggy serves as the secretary for that board. And so what they do is start with those members to see if they're interested in being reappointed. Coming forward doesn't stop anyone else from putting a maybe different consideration to start with our members.
But there was some, there was some sort of an endorsement from the committee on each of these?
Yeah.
Okay. And then has CIP communicated at all about?
No.
I didn't realize we had an opening until we got his.
Right, neither. Well, so the opening came when you stepped out of, because your position, so there's always a Board of Finance representative. The Chair of the Board of Finance sits on CIP. So there is a voice of the Board of Finance. You filled that role.
Yeah.
When you left, Steph filled that role.
Yeah.
But Stephanie was her own person appointed.
Was already on the.
So the seat that Stephanie sat as a regular member became available.
Okay.
So she sits as the Chair. And then so that's, it's kind of, and again, in absence of folks who are willing to come forward and participate.
Can, can I ask Mr. Marshall a question since he's here?
I am welcome.
What, if you've had, have you had communication with Christina? She's still chairing the CIP, right?
Right. Yeah, I reached out formally to ask her to express interest and to her ends. Just letting know, is her address, and she suggested that in a letter basically stating, I'm going to the Board of Selectmen. I believe I copied Christina. So she's aware of the appointment, of the appointment request, right?
Sometimes the, the endorsements come through the committee. Sometimes they come through a party because as you know, we have to have a balance in who sits politically on any board or commission. And so this is one of those cases where it was an individual and that happens often. It's not unusual. I mean, so we'll put their, their own name forward.
So I do think the intent anyway was for CIP to start earlier this year just because there's so much planning that we've been encountering and the length of planning. So I would suspect they would start before December. But regardless, you know, if Jim decides that this is abhorrent, he's got the opportunity to duck out December 1st. And they can throw him off the ship if they don't like him also.
We're also in a municipal election year, so lots of things will get talked up.
Yeah, and I don't mean to make light of your service. You know, we've worked together a lot already on SBC and, and all that.
You could get here and be like, whoop, thank you. Or sign me up.
So I mean, I do have a little bit of a concern that, that you eventually, you essentially absorb CIP into Board of Finance in a sense.
Yes.
But I think we also should not be looking to give tours in the mouth who's willing to participate.
No, and that's why I wanted just it to be a discussion purpose, is that if folks are interested, this is, look, this is a really important committee. And it's an important committee that advises the Board of Selectmen. It is a Board of Selectmen Advisory Committee. They advise us and then that plan goes to the Board of Finance. So, you know, when the Board of Finance, and there was a time in, in my earlier years here where there were several members because they, they had been on before but not on Board of Finance and they were the only folks willing to serve. And so it served its purpose. It's a committee that needs to be and needs to be discussed. But I think as a town, we hear folks all the time say they want to hear more voices, but we need you to come forward to do so. Right? We can want it all we want. Unless people come forward, I would ask you to be thankful for those that do and are willing to serve.
And I'm thinking in the absence of a big groundswell of people saying, I want to go on to serve on a CIP.
Nothing's on the door.
I think there's nothing wrong with James wanting to serve. Seen a little bit right.
Yeah.
He said, there's nothing wrong. I said, there's even a little bit right.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The next item is alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Marshall has once again been asked, or has asked us to consider making him an alternate. He did chair's communication with the Chair. We didn't get any information from the Chair. For information purposes, the Board of Selectmen, a different Board of Selectmen, appointed Mr. Marshall. And for different reasons, Mr. Marshall accepted and then resigned from, from this position. So he's asking once again to be considered.
Could you speak a little on that?
Yeah, I had requested during the warehouse application. I was pretty vocally outward against it. So upon being appointed, I found like, you know, I, I I chose to resign out of concerns that I would throw the process into question and cause a lot of concern, sitting on the board, having been outspoken prior to the appointment. So I got out of the way a bit at the interest of just trying to preserve the appropriateness of that process for the So, yep, that's just behind that. So.
This, again, is an appointed, only an appointed, it's not, the commission is elected. The three alternates are appointed.
And we got, did you get any input from the Chair?
None. No.
Unlike, unlike the Chair.
Mr. Marshall, we received your letter. Were you endorsed by a political party?
Yeah, the ones from downtown, perhaps actually were interested in finding somebody interesting in the spot there where Mike Prior and they.
But did they share an endorsement with you?
Yeah, they were a lot of the meeting when they, yeah.
But not, so I have no form, I don't, we received a formal.
I assume they had, had sent that along, be right, copied him on that. So on that appointment, I did just learn. Because they had voted to endorse my, my alternation.
And just for your information, there asked and answered, there is no conflict between sitting on Planning and Zoning and Board of Finance or anything.
I was just gonna ask that question. If there are conflicts.
There is not. That asked and, and answered in there. This came up several years ago when Randy Blair sat on both boards and was elected to vote for it. They do not, there are a couple of things that sit in conflict and these are not.
I'd like to see that endorsement letter from the.
I, I don't know that I've seen one, which is why I, I asked.
Yeah, I don't know that they, it was a vote during their last meeting.
Right. I usually like the secretary or somebody would send something to the town clerk and then we would.
Yeah, so I guess that I don't disagree and speak through as the Chair, but that's it. I guess what happened or the line is later.
You made the motion already.
No, nobody has made a motion.
The motion, okay.
There has been no motion.
I mean, I'd almost like to see this hold off till another meeting table, till another meeting, till we get the endorsement. So it's a matter of record. I would, and if the, and if the commissioner, I mean, the commissioner, the Chair of the Commission is, chooses to weigh in, that would be great to have that information. If they choose not to, then I wouldn't hold it up for that. But you know, if they choose to weigh in, that would be great. But more importantly, I think if a particular political party is going to endorse you, that's important information to have because then when we do get into these conversations about equality and representation, it should be a matter of record.
So I'm not hearing a motion.
Should we move the table or do we just leave it alone and? Okay. Just leave it alone, just not act on it right now. Okay.
All right. Seeing none, we'll move forward. The next item is calling a town meeting. I am always a fan of combining items. I was not able to, timing wise, get another item that will be coming before us together with this. But because we do not want to lose the ability to purchase specifically the Chevy Tahoe. They have our, we changed vendor, if you recall, because we've already lost a vehicle. We still don't have a Public Works Director vehicle because of these kinds of action. So he drives around in this weather with no air conditioning in his vehicle currently. So with that, I am going to make a motion. Town of Wellington, notice a warning, public hearing. The electors of the town of Wellington and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet in public hearing at the Wellington Old Town Hall, 11 Common Road, Wellington, Connecticut at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, for the following purposes. Item one, public hearing item. Presentation and discussion of a seven-year lease purchase agreement for the total amount of $194,500 for a 2024 freightliner 114 S D single axle cloud truck, $119,500, and a 2023 Chevy Tahoe S F C four by four, $43,800, and light center console accessories, $31,200 for the Public Works Department and Wellington Hellfire Department respectively. No vote on this item dated at Wellington the 17th day of July 2023. Is there a second? Second is like Jim. Um, and again, what's important to note is, this is a public hearing. There will be no vote. Action from, from Board of Selectmen. Um, and if we heard some, some information, we would, uh, serve. Seeing no further discussion, um, on a verbal vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Uh, can I just make a note, like, it isn't really the motion itself, but just for people in the public for the record, um, that dump truck leasing is approximately half of the cost of a truck. The taxpayers have already committed the, about $125,000 to that purchase. Um, so this is essentially leading, this completes the funding of the purchase.
Um, the remainder came, I believe, from the reserve, and we already voted on that.
The capital reserve, yes.
The town meeting. Yep, I signed my version under my, uh, no, I sold, I sold Jim.
Okay, go mine.
I sold so good, and so I have to sign that.
I am signing herein on my name.
On his name, I got crazy. All right, um, old business. The Fire Fighter Abatement Ordinance. Um, again, this was to specify, if you don't have them. And I'll put the legal notes in the paper. Um, willing, uh, Chief Snyder had come to us asking, uh.
Oh, I think it's Steve.
Oh, no, Chief, Chief Snyder, Chief Snyder, asked us to, um, consider increasing, um, the amount of the abatement in line with the, uh, adjusted, uh, public act. There had been some other proposals at the time, um, asking us to consider some other changes. He referenced his retirement title, um, and some other changes have changed. I know one of the things that I had brought concern with is, I, what I would not want to see is us change any of the, um, active service requirements, as they stood with the original abatement. The biggest, um, concern I had was when we were going to be asked to, um, remove the section that said they must declare that they're active towards receiving abatements. Um, but I believe, uh, Chief Snyder, um, is saying he would like that too. That change, and really the amount is the only change I see in his version. The, the things we were concerned about back to the original wording. And so what I have really left unchanged is moving from the $1,000 to $2,000. And then requirements were still the same, the reporting was still the same. You must be up to date going back two years, uh, with your taxes in order to be eligible. And then each department, this would serve for both departments, although the request came from Chief Snyder. This would benefit those members that participate. If you're willing to one, each department has set their own terms, um, for who is eligible. And, um, if willing to one, uh, Chief Moore, your member, your, um, average volunteer are not eligible currently.
Typically, they don't make the call, like, they make the training, stuff like that.
They're not the call on it. Um, so, what, um, in, in my, my, the next step is, um, for us to, if, if we had any other suggestions for changes, I can, at our next meeting, bring you a final draft of the change, send that to our town attorney to be looked at for us to consider moving forward to a public hearing, and then, um, a town meeting. So that would be multi-step, um, hearing and town meeting, because this is an ordinance, an existing ordinance. It would be looking at changing and updating, so we would have a public hearing on it once we had agreed to the language. Um, there was a time, and I don't see Chief Snyder on this meeting. There was a time he was working, uh, evenings.
Um, he's at work.
No, that's, that's not, that's our employee. Cause he's still working, but then I thought he'd come back today. He's at work right now. So I would, um, ask Alex, I know you guys have talked, you all talked about this, is the Efficiency Committee, and there had been some, um, action there. I'm gonna.
Can I just add?
Except you had refused yourself from this discussion.
And that's what I'm attempting to do. I was waiting to not interrupt you.
But I said you would already, so.
No, I just wanted to let the record show that because I have in the past been eligible for this, and I may in the future, while I have been opting out of it during my time in public service, um, I won't dissipate in anything about the fore or against this. I just wanted to all right.
Thank you. Um, so what I would ask is, if maybe the two of you, and I understand his work schedule is such that he may not be able to be here, but if the two of you could present us, um, some, you know, your final thoughts, I will take the draft, then I'll give to the Selectmen, provide it to the both of you, and if we agree on that, send it to the town attorney. If we have no other changes, do you have thoughts, Jim?
Yes, I have thoughts. Uh, so, uh, the two things I'd like to see is that, uh, the, whatever, however this is structured, is, is driving, you know, when, I mean, you get a call, it's driving participation. Uh, and second all, it's, it's encouraging training. So the re- retention, the participation, the training, I think are most important. I don't have any concern with the dollar values being aligned with whatever statute, that's not a big deal. Um, I do have some problems with, I, I don't want the ordinance to be in conflict with other laws. I mean, I don't, you know, everybody should be paying their, their property taxes and, and when, in, in, in the line, this whole set of laws that deal with that. Um, so I, I definitely support a legal review, but I just want to make sure that it's driving that training and driving the, the participation that you're looking for. Those are my real two names.
Yeah, Jim, and we completely agree on that, which is why when some of the, um, uh, initial proposals for reduction in some of those, I have concerns about that, because what I don't want to do is take away the incentive to participate. I think, um, not just going to calls, but being full members of those departments. And so some of those meetings that were originally reduced, to me, would take away from that, being a full member, which is, you know, an active member of our community, in fire service specifically. So I will draft, um, final draft. I will share with you and Chief Snyder, um, for your last thoughts, and then I will get, um, a legal review, which will be needed. Bring it to this board, and we'll move forward those steps.
Yeah, so, so those requirements that the fire departments have, their members to all that, I'd rather leave that up to the fire departments, that you know best how to manage yours.
Well, some of their originals were to reduce the number of department meetings and trainings that they needed to go to to be eligible. So, but, but Chief Snyder went back.
I almost wish that wasn't in there, right? It's like, I, I would, you know, it, it's whatever the departments need to do to run their departments. It's, it's fine, far as I'm concerned.
Uh, uh, I agree that they know what they need to run their departments, but in order to, there need to be some rules in order to make you eligible. And again, the idea is retaining, um, volunteers, and, and you want them to be part of your department. And so requiring that they actually participate in the department before we give them an abatement, that's what those, um, original items were negotiated, um, as part of this war. So, but you're not now, not suggesting we change them. Simply just increasing the abatement amount. Okay, all right, I will send a final draft, um, um, to both of you, and then onto the Selectmen, um, after.
Yeah, I have an older draft from whatever we were discussing it, so.
Okay, perfect.
Maybe it's the present ordinance, but I, I have a couple of, obviously.
Yeah.
But having something that's the latest would be good.
Yeah, and again, Chief Moore not being here is nuts to me. Um, so maybe we can't go forward. Maybe he can communicate, put something forward to us together, so I think that's, um, appropriate. All right.
I would just like to make a comment procedurally. Um, this downstream of previous Selectmen's meetings, this has gone back to the Efficiency Committee also, and discussed in the full Efficiency Committee with both Fire Chiefs present and all that. So that request of this board was firmed up, that everyone participate in the conversation.
Yeah, which I think is great.
Point out that that was, this is a joint presentation.
Yeah, and so when you're getting, I, I know you've talked about it in those meetings, so maybe just a formal communication back to us, for the record.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, I will move on to item B, the discussion on change in town office. I see, uh, several members of our staff, um, on, if you recall, um, at our last meeting, the proposal was for us to consider changing, um, town office building hours from five days a week to, um, four days a week with Fridays off. Um, their proposal was across the board for town employees, I believe. Um, and so I, I expressed some concerns, um, with making that change outside of the town office building. Specifically, we have a, uh, individual at the senior center changing to four days a week. We leave the senior center without someone. And many other towns that have done this, it is their, is their town hall that has changed their hours, their public works, um, has not. In many of those towns, their public works department is on their own union contract. So you're looking at, because we will, we would need an M O U, um, to, um, adjust some of these things. There are other things that would need to be discussed beyond just the working hours, um, of the staff and the building. It would increase their workday in some cases. And so there, we'd be checking about holidays would be affected. There are some holidays we have on Fridays, if they no longer work on Friday, what does that holiday look like? And then future contracts could be firmed up in the C D A. Um, but initially would need to be, uh, agreeing to an M O U. But I would like to hear your thoughts after rolling over what was presented to you last time. Um, and while we know we can change the hours of the town hall at any time to increase those hours, their proposal to go from 27 Oakland, open public hours to 34 open public hours in four days instead of five, um, is really what we're asking. So, Mike?
I am still, and even more so than the last meeting, in support of the idea with the following concerns that I think we need to address. That is, we need to, if we're not doing our job, if we have not considered if there are any departments that really need to be serving the public on Friday also. And, and I don't know the answer to that. So when I suggest these things, it doesn't mean that I know it. But for example, if the town clerk, if there's a reason, a compelling reason the town clerk's office needs to be open or should be open on Friday, then it's either that office doesn't participate, or the employees are offset one day. So that one employee works Monday, Thursday, the other employee works Tuesday, Friday. If I may, may interject, there's at least a few calendar items I'm aware of on the town clerk's side, they have to be open to accept nominations or something like that. So those are examples of the things I think we need to make sure we understand those before we go forward. And, and if, and there may be more than one way to address those. Um, but we need to make sure we understand those and not all of a sudden create a gap that's significant. Um, I don't know if that would apply downstairs in zoning and land use, that someone be able to apply for a building permit on Friday, so maybe not. Maybe they can just wait until Monday, or build it over the weekend, any night, and, um, get a summon for it, as some people do.
They, they can actually can apply online, so you can apply for your permit anytime. I, I will say this, um, in our research and talking with, uh, our department heads, that would be a change of business, not a change of need or statute. There are many towns across, um, Connecticut who have a four-day work week. Some are Fridays, some are not. So you see some that are middle of the week, some that are, are friends in Ashford, are Thursdays. Um, there's nothing statutorily that says we have to be open on a day of the week so that business can be conducted. It would mean if something, if you had a timeframe by which to file something, and they're not open, then you need to work within the hour something is open. So those things, um, I have looked into and vetted out, but there is no particular reason. Um, I will say someone brought up the concern at our last meeting, um, at present to speak about how that would affect, our open hours would affect boards and commissions meeting. It would not.
Most of them don't meet on Fridays anyway.
They don't necessarily meet on Fridays, but they're still able to meet in those nights. Our public hours would not impede on boards and commission meetings and their ability to continue in the manner in which they have. So none of that would change, the building is still available to those boards, um, commissioners. So we would not see a change in, in business there.
So my other, my other couple of concerns are, I agree that we need a different agreement for, uh, public works. Um, there's just too many opportunities that they would need to be doing something on Friday, then all of a sudden that would be overtime.
Correct.
Um, or if someone's not available to commit on overtime, it'd be nobody able to serve. Um, so I think that needs to be considered differently. And then I think, um, the, the staff who's brought this to us has done a good job of putting together sort of a plan and sharing their ideas of why they think it would work. I think that when the M O U or stipulated agreement or whatever is put together, there should, there should be a test period. And that way, if we find something's working really well, and it should be expanded or shifted, or something's not working well, we have the opportunity to adjust things a little bit. And as opposed to starting this date, this is the new way we do business, and then we find out it's not working.
Um, I couldn't agree more. I think at minimum, a six-month, um, term, and that gives, and I say that at this point particularly, we are nearing a municipal election, so there could be a change, uh, in leadership, um, in November, and, um, that gives three months of the board's tenure to give feedback, and then three months with a new, um, board. If, if we were continuing business, I think at minimum six months is an ample opportunity. That also will lead us into, um, the negotiations period for the survey that is set to expire, uh, June 30 of 2024. So it is perfect, um, timing. That's not to say that is what we look at, but I would suggest that we give this a test run. Um, it, it, Jim, before I make other comments, Jim, your thoughts?
Well, since I'm going last year, you guys covered pretty much the same things I had, which was, yeah, I, I, it should be different for public works.
I'll be on the same page.
Yeah, I don't, don't, don't.
Easy, easy.
Yeah, I, I, I think it should be, uh, at least on a trial basis, because we don't, we can't possibly conceive all the potential pitfalls. Maybe none, uh, but I, I also know a lot of stuff works on a calendar here in the town office. So, you know, maybe there's just days where it's just, you have to be in the office and be in front of the public, I, I don't know. But the workers here can best figure that out rather than us. But I think that's a trial period, so you can s-, get some feedback of, of the folks that are working it, see how that worked. Uh, maybe also allow for the public to, to come back and say, well, yeah, it worked fine. I didn't, you, you didn't get any complaints or anybody raising any issues. Yes, I could get my building permit, or I still got my service at the, uh, you know, the senior sector or something like that. Uh, I, I think, I think having that as a trial period is, is, uh, is important. Especially February with all the Monday holidays. You know, and people start saying, oh, this three-day work week is not working or whatever, the services are falling behind, or maybe it's great.
In, with COVID, and then pre-COVID, specifically with the land use department, many of our services went online. There are certainly services specifically within the town clerk's office that cannot be done online, it will never be able to be done online. But with that said, they exist in every other town in the state of Connecticut, and those that are only open four days a week are able to continue. Uh, I see our town clerk has joined us, um, as her workday ended. So, Robin, if I may, if you're willing to weigh in, one of the things Mike had said was, are there things that would require us to have to be open on a Monday in order to file in a timely fashion? Can you, Friday, did I say Monday, I meant Friday?
I mean, I think it's just a matter of, um, planning ahead, normal, like, advertise.
Advertise.
That people know, it's gonna be a learning curve for everybody. Um, but I know Talents, um, Stafford, those two, um, I talked to Stafford at least, we definitely never had a, they, they seem to work well.
You don't talk to him on Friday, do you?
I, actually, I, sometimes I do, but, but no, I, I just think it's a learn, it'll be a learning curve that you need to advertise. But no, I, I just think it's a learn, it'll be a learning curve that you need to advertise, buy, educate. And yeah, no way you need to.
And to that point, we are aware when our neighboring towns are open and closed, because we work often closely with them on different matters. For example, the Canel Rock property, we share a lot of work with, that property with the town of Ashford. So while working through that, I always knew if I had a question and I didn't get it in by the end of day and Wednesday, I had to wait till Friday because they're closed on Thursday. And while Thursday morning I want to speak with them because we're working on it, I just, I planned when we had those meetings and discussions, and so it wasn't problematic. And it is becoming the norm. And, and I will say.
I was in meetings today for another town discussing this exactly.
Yeah. And in absence of, you know, you saw companies doing work from home at the telecommuting. That's not the name that works in town government. It's just, it's not the nature of our business. And so this is another benefit to, to our staff as well. But I want to applaud the staff and the work that they did in bringing this forward to us. And, and I, I cannot say enough, this was not at my behest. This was, these folks working together to say, not only will this benefit us, but this is more going to benefit our public. They are going to be able to come in here more than they can today. We may only be here four days a week, but they're going to have greater access to us. And we're going to give up some of that time we have to work when you folks aren't here. And they're, they're giving that up to make sure that the public access is there, because that's why we're here. So this, you know, don't get me wrong, they're going to benefit with a little work-life balance here. But their concept was to give more to the public, to themselves. So I think that should be noted. So.
What should we be doing?
So could I, I'm going to make a suggestion that i- if we want to take some action to consider this, that we put a timeframe on it, that, you know, we would, A, we want to endorse this, and then there's some things that have to be worked out. And, and when? So let's give us a timeframe. My suggestion is, you know, we look for possibly September first start. And giving us, you know, a month to negotiate, a month and a half to negotiate with the union. So the things that would have to get worked out in order to do so, that would also give us the time to adequately notice the townspeople of what our hours were. So it would take action by us to move in a direction of this proposal and then get all of those things worked out. If we find, if I come back to you and say, listen, we're going to need more time and we need till, you know, September 15th or October 1st, then I'll regroup and come back to you with that. But, you know, I think if we want to consider this, then our step is to take some formal action. And then that moves us in the steps of formalizing the, the nitty-gritty and the specifics. And that's, that's a lot more behind the scenes, if you will, and, and working directly with the union. So I'm, I'm going to throw out there that, I'm going to make a motion that we, on a six-month trial basis, alter the hours of the town office building to thirty-four open public hours, Monday through Thursday, closed on Fridays.
That's your, that's your motion?
That's the motion. Did I say all that I wanted to say? Can you read back what I said?
Just wondering, would you have like effective dates or if we should be empowering you to negotiate with the union or any of that kind of stuff? Or our target date?
Did I say September 1st? Beginning September 1st for a six-month period?
You just say odd.
You just said six-month period. You didn't, you said the September 1st. Because I was looking at my calendar, waiting for you to say.
Okay, so then I'll start again. That's why I was like, can you read that back? I will move that we change the town office building hours to thirty-four open public hours, Monday through Thursday, closed on Fridays, beginning September 1st, 2023, in a probationary period of six months.
Second.
Second amendment discussion.
Can I?
Yes, you may.
I realize this was said this sooner. I'm just looking at the calendar and we have a selectmen's meeting on September 4th. And.
September 5th.
Oh, it's the fourth of Monday holiday. See, complications already. All right, we, we can't do it. So we'll have a meeting on the 5th. So with August, so our last meeting in August would be the 21st. Do you think you could have something pulled together by the 21st for us to approve?
I hope so. Can I tell you that if by our meeting on the 7th, it looks like it's not going to, I'll be giving you some, you know, we'll come back with some direction and say, let's, let's readjust.
Okay.
But I think it makes sense in time hammering out the specific details. There will be things within the contract that we will have to look at. And in our, in my research, once this portfolio came, came, you know, some of those things that other towns had to adjust and, and how you pay time off, whether it be in days or hours, you know, when you change hours like this. Important conditions.
Sure. So if we, if we approve this motion, is that it? That's the end of it? Or does it still come back for a final approval of the schedule and the agreement? Because it's a, you're modifying the labor agreement too. So I would think the conditions of that modification should come back to the board for approval.
An MOU can be agreed upon between myself and the union. Those discussions, I think, would come back to this board in some capacity, not necessarily in public. The, the final result would absolutely be public.
Yeah, well, there's difference between being public and us having a chance to approve, let's negotiate.
Right, right. That's why I say it would come back to us to start, and that may not be public. Right? So those, you know, while we're negotiating. And, and again, the things that I think we'd be looking at are holidays specifically. If you're no longer work day, it's a Friday, how do we handle those holidays? That came up in another town when they did this in 2009. And the manner by which you're paid time off was handled. So that you don't lose any of that. It's just a manner of accounting, and that language is very specific in the CBA. Those are really, to me, the, the big caveats that, that would come out of that, but that gets this board will be privy to those discussions. And they would have, they would have to be finalized before that September 1 date.
Yeah, but it shouldn't really change anything.
No.
It's just that, it's like you said, it's just a company.
That's correct.
And then how you handle it.
Right. We're not looking to change any of those major details.
Days away or anything.
Absolutely not. We're not looking to change any of that. Now, if there was new discussions in a new CBA, that's for that negotiation and that contract. So this is just firm.
Yeah, the timing would actually be good for the test period to feed into the conversation for negotiations.
Correct.
Because some towns have said, well, in trade for the four-day work week, you may lose an occasional Friday holiday. And that's just what you get for this other thing. And others have said, well, we need a new way to, so that you, if people get 12 holidays, they still get 12 holidays somehow. It's been done both ways.
It has. And I'll tell you, specifically in the town of Tallent, they, their Friday holidays, they lost, but their late night is Thursday. So the trade-off is those Friday holidays, the Thursday before they close at 4:30 instead of their 7:30. So that's how they handled some of those things. But those were things that were negotiated to start and then firmed up in future contracts. We happen to be at a time where we are in the last year, or we've just begun the last year of our current contract. So, and, and it's not to say that those things could still only be temporary. If the parties don't agree to such, so, but it allows us to have conversation. And again, not changing anything major without discussion of this board, but allowing us to alter the hours and then working times of the town office building. To Monday through Thursday. And in that, you know, proposed hours, we confirm those up in additional motions and within our next two meetings. Specifically probably our next, our August 7 meeting for sure.
Can you read back the motion?
Erica made the motion to alter the town office building hours to thirty-four open public hours beginning September 1st, 2023, for probationary period. Didn't I say Monday through Thursday with Friday closed? Can I, who seconded my motion? Mike did. Can I ask for a friendly amendment to give the specific hours of the Monday through Thursday to 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Monday and 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday through Thursday?
I'll make that finally. Fine, I was, I'm just concerned about, I'm a little concerned about if we make the approval tonight if the board stops with approval. And by now adding another thing that's in this motion, that's less that we have future approval of.
And I, I think we can often change those, if nothing comes out of it. But if we are looking at adjusting these, and this is what we want to go with, with the thirty-four hours that we, that we go ahead and solidify that's our change, because then we can begin our messaging to the public. As soon, as such time as we've come to that agreement and begin to put out there, not only are we going to be closed on Fridays, but these are our new hours, Monday through Thursday. So unless this board wants to talk about how else to configure those hours, and since they've given this proposal, I've gone over many options, quite frankly, trying to get us to thirty-five hours, since we do have employees that are, that work up to thirty-five. But I can't get there with, with a realistic, easy-to-remember schedule for our public. And I think that's, for me, the sticking point is having as many of those days consistent.
But your concern.
My only concern is that, my only concern is that what we're talking about here, I'm in agreement with everything we're talking about here. My only concern is once the mechanisms are all worked out and the negotiating happens and the details are out, is it something that we're still, do we need to have one more chance at approving it or not? And I guess the advantage of being more specific is there's less we would need to approve of. Because it's already in this motion.
Look, if we don't move.
It's just, it's a big change.
It's a big change.
I, I think you want to.
We're doing it with kind of not a plan, with a, with a thin, well, bits of it.
You want to see the MOU.
Yeah, yes.
Right.
That's, that's my only thing.
Yes. And those are things I'm going to lay out on the table for you now.
Of course.
So, but I, those are the things I thought.
Yes. Oh, yeah. No, no, no. I, I, I think we should move forward. I just, I'm trying to think of a way it comes back once for the blessing of the actual agreement.
It's, and, and again, I think what really, I hear the staff, the entire staff that, that wants to see this happen. I just don't know that this plan happens outside of this building, transfer station, public works, and senior center, and those are where those staff members fly. And the rest are town employees. When we talk about the library, they're not town employees or.
Since, since I seconded the, the original, I'll second the friendly amendment. I think I probably have to second it since I seconded the original.
You just had to agree to the friendly amendment.
Okay.
These are the days where I miss this chair. Okay.
All right, let's roll.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a roll call.
Jim?
Fine.
Erica, auto. Mike?
I.
Motion carries. Again, if I hit major bumps in the road, you will hear from me, because we may not be able to proceed as planned since it's. Next item, I think that brings us to present to speak again. That's my agenda here. Present to speak. Here we go. Anyone in the room, present to speak? Quiet bunch. Yes, Ms. Snyder? Could identify yourself with a record and limit your comments to two minutes?
I just wanted to say that, you know, we really did do a lot of research on this whole idea of having, spending our hours to the public. Really, that is our main goal to, if you think about nine to two, not a lot of people are at work by July. So if we could extend our hours just a little bit, maybe a little more for the most public, maybe they could come, you know, before they get to work. Or maybe they could come after, you know, they haven't shot it. Getting here. So. And I just wanted to say that we really all get together on it and discuss it. The good parts and the bad parts.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? All right, online, Mr. Tella.
Nick Tella, 49 Myrna. So, I just want to give a heads up, you know, I saw some survey, I know it's a board of education, but just a heads up to the board of selectmen in case they, they plan on doing surveys in, in the future. Board of Education did a survey where people could vote multiple times on a survey that they just put out. I mean, you literally could go in there and vote 50 times for, I think it was like hybrid in person or different styles of meetings. So their survey there was completely flawed. So just be, I guess, mindful of that if you guys go that route at some point. Great job on addressing the truck issue over at Love's. And I agree with Erica when it comes to stacking the CIP with, with just Board of Finance members or something like that. Unfortunately, he, he got on, but that is what it is. Buildings should not be closed, in my opinion, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday. If there was going to be a day off, it should have fell somewhere between Tuesday and Thursday. I was just looking at Ashford just for themselves. Thursday is their day off that they have. So last thing is, we compare ourselves to Tallent, Stafford, and Mansfield often. And if you look at their populations, I'm not going to go through each one, they're significantly higher than us. I, I don't understand why we don't reference Ashford, Eastford, and, and say Chaplain more often. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley Rule, identify yourself in the record.
I, Colleen Quinn, 15 Village Street. Sorry, it's my daughter's computer with the name. So I missed what you got with the computer going in and out. So did you guys, are you moving forward with starting in on September 1st? Or are we waiting because we want some more i's dotted and t's crossed? I didn't hear what you guys.
We touched that our, our objective is to begin new hours on September 1st. With, with all the proper i's dotted and t's crossed, simply.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that part. I didn't know if there was someone on there against it, because it kind of went out on me here. Okay, I just, I mean, you guys are not going to know ultimately. Granted, this is my opinion. No one's going to know till we try. And I know that there's going to be things that come up, but again, we can't, we can guess at things, I guess we can. But ultimately, until we actually give it a shot and see how it works, and as a person, and you know I don't come to these things all the time, but for somebody who has, this has been like an irksome thing for me since the day I moved in here. It has driven me crazy. So I appreciate all the town employees going to this point to care that it's for them and yet for us. And I realize it seems like, oh, they get the extra day off, but ultimately, the hours are more open, more accessible for more people, and they get to keep more money in their pockets, because as I said, they don't have to take the whole day off of work, which they, a lot of people do, because it's nine to two, where if, if you're open till four, they can leave at three and ultimately get a full day's pay and still stop at the town hall. So. Okay, thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Anyone else online, present to speak? Anyone else online going on? Anyone else online? Oh, all right. Thank you. You always have the ability to reach out to the selectmen's office with your concerns. Good and welfare, I want to remind folks, Mobile Food Share is here at the town office building. It is Wednesday, this Wednesday, July 19th. It is every other Wednesday from 11:00 to 11:30. And to all residents of the state of Connecticut, not just Wellington residents, that's the Food Share portion. Our senior center do a bread giveaway, and that is only Wellington residents. That's at the senior center every Wednesday at 10:30. And so I want to thank all of our volunteers for making sure those items happen. I want to let you know, our summer Parks and Rec camp began last week. It was hot, but it was successful. So our. So our new Parks and Rec director, uh, Jimmy Callahan had, uh, and his camp staff had a fantastic week. Um, we are in day one, today was day one of week two out of five. So, um, kudos to, uh, Jimmy, his staff, uh, Kelly, the camp director and, and all the kids had a good time. So if you're interested, there were still a couple of spots open in a different week. So you can reach out to the Parks and Rec Department if you're interested in sending your child to summer camp. It is open only to Wellington residents. Um, as always, please continue to support our small businesses and restaurants if you can. Uh, my office, um, on a regular basis and, and even more so now, working with the state police regarding, um, speeding concerns in town and the increased amount of traffic, um, ATV and, uh, dirt bikes on the roads. So we've asked, uh, residents, uh, to be mindful of whether or not their vehicles should be on the road. Um, and, and so I, once again, part of, uh, my position is our, um, LTA, and our local traffic authority, working with our partners at, um, Connecticut State Police, Troop C, um, to be mindful of those. And sometimes I'm asking them for increased controls. So if the speeders are our own residents in our own neighborhoods, um, you know, be prepared, um, to potentially be stopped. So, um, we take it seriously. Wednesdays in the park, concert series, uh, we have two more Wednesdays. This Wednesday and next was a reschedule of Bruce John. Uh, everyone wants to see their local talent. It is 6:30 to 8:30 at River Road Athletic Center. This week is Broken Road performing and our human services department will be selling concessions and collecting items at the food pantry. You can see our website or Facebook for details. Um, they will also be taking donations for our fuel bank. Um, so any other, oh, no, I didn't have.
Sorry, tree.
Oh, and it's free, it's free, it's great and it happens, uh, rain or shine, um, serious storms canceled. So no one likes to be holding a microphone in a length, for sure. Um, our June report from Troop C has 268 total calls for service. That includes 13 accidents, 13 criminal investigations, zero burglaries, zero larcenies and 160 non-reportable matters and a total of six total arrests. Um, motor vehicle enforcement was 84 total traffic stops that included one onsite DUI, one arrest, five misdemeanor summons, four, 44 infractions, four written warnings and 29 verbal warnings. I want to acknowledge that on July 12th, uh, Wellington, uh, resident Sophie Perezak celebrated her 100th birthday. So if you don't see, uh, Ms. Perezak, um, please, um, join me and, um, and, and, uh, wishing her a happy 100th, it's a milestone, there's something in the water here. So I don't know what it is, but you know, this is, this is three in, in two years. So it, it's, it's a big, um, deal and I wish Sophie, um, a happy birthday. We didn't have a meeting before her birthday, so we weren't able to do it before.
I'll see you in 45 years.
Okay, excellent. I'll see you more than that. Um, I do want to, uh, once again, highlight a couple of openings we have. Inland Wetlands, um, is in need of members. So if you're interested or know someone who might be, please, uh, reach out to the town clerk's office, the selectmen's office or the land use office for information on that board.
Where's EDC, Dylan? I'm going to be sure.
Yeah.
EDC needs members. Um, I, I know, listen, they have a chair. The last time I knew, he reluctantly took the chair because no one else on the board did. So, um.
I think the last time I met was in June, right?
Yeah.
So it's not that long ago.
It's not that long ago, EDC needs members. And we currently do not have recording secretaries for CIP and Board of Finance. Um, and so if anyone is interested in being appointed as the recording secretary, uh, for CIP, you can contact the selectmen's office for Board of Finance. You're appointed through the selectmen's office, but I encourage you to reach out to the chairman of the Board of Finance.
It is a paid position.
They are paid positions, it's paid, um, in $20 an hour. Um, it, you know, attendance at meetings is, uh, required. Um, encouraged, we do record our meetings. So if you want more information, please, we need, um, these are valuable, valuable positions to make sure that we have quality, important minutes. All of selectmen's office. Anything else for good and welfare folks?
I did have one more thing.
You got it.
Um, now, we're going on a whole recording. Oh, uh, SBC, I should have said it during the SBC report, but, um, I have to review the, based on the feedback I have so far from SBC members on the, um, outline of the final report. I suspect we're probably going to cancel this week's SBC meeting.
Okay.
Just to give time for more. I, I believe I've only heard back from about a third of the members so far on what we put together. I think they need more time with the July 4th holiday and everything else.
We'll look forward to.
I, I will make a decision tomorrow morning.
Well, thanks for freeing up my vacation. I appreciate it. Um, I, I do have two more things. Our, uh, tax collector sitting here in the room reminds me, tax bills, um, went out. They are due without interest penalty by August 1st. Which means you have to have your payment here in the mail, postmarked by August 1st. Um, otherwise you will accrue interest. And the transfer station, you need to, uh, folks need to be reminded, they need, um, a sticker and you must be a resident, upping residence, helpful trash. And your new bulk, bulky permits were in your tax bills. So if you didn't shake it out and all you took out was the exciting tax bill, or you put that tax bill aside, your bulky permit is in there. If you have any other issues with bulky permits, see, um, an attendant at the transfer station. That's all I have.
Tax bills on the kitchen table, I don't remember the bulky permit being in there.
Take out, it is, um, Public Works yellow. It is bright and.
I'll go back and unfold it when I get home.
Back and check that out. I may have stuffed that one right in there. I did some stuffing of the bills. So, all right, seeing no other business before us, I will move to adjourn at 8:08 PM.
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? Oh, it's a non-debatable matter, all those in favor? Hi. Motion Carrie, thank you. Thank you. You sign these?
I did.
Your booklet, you have sent me with many.